I'd like to call this meeting of the Alexandria County Board of Commissioners into session at this time. Ladies and gentlemen, as most of you know, today is Honor Pearl Harbor Day. It's the day of the remember the things that had taken place on December the 7th in Pearl Harbor. And for that reason, tonight, we have two special guests with us. Military personnel that are retired military personnel and members of the Veterans Association. We have with us tonight retired Navy Sal Rayo, who will be leading our invocation. And we have with us James Berkey Jennings, who was in the Navy, will be giving our pledge of allegiance. And those folks, I'll give them an opportunity, they'd like to, I'll let them speak for just a moment before they do the invocation and the pledge. And I'd like for all of us to take time out this week to remember those people in Pearl Harbor that were killed that day, their families. It was a tragic event, one that we'll never forget. And at this time, I'd ask for you to please rise, and I'd ask for Mr. Jennings and Mr. Rayo to please come forward.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for those present who serve our country, our county, excuse me, those serving our state, and those who are and have served our country. We remember those who have lost their lives in this service. Please bless us and them. We ask your guidance for this body as they make decisions for our benefit. We ask in this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I have a few comments I want to make before I do the pledge of allegiance. And I've been asked to keep it short, which is really hard for me to do. But because it is such a serious day, I just want to give you some salient facts about Pearl Harbor Day. It's the 74th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. 2,403 military personnel and civilians were killed on that day. Two-thirds of them were killed in the first 15 minutes of the attack. As President Roosevelt said on December the 8th, when we declared war on Japan, this is a day in infamy that will never be forgotten. To put this 2,403 number in perspective, on 9/11/2001, the total death toll in the World Trade Center attacks and the Pentagon in Pennsylvania were 2,977, which was a few more than Pearl Harbor, but it was still a horrendous attack. On December the 11th is when Germany declared war on the United States, which really officially, when World War II started, actually started in 1939, when the Germans were taking over Poland, Czechoslovakia, and all the other things, all the other countries. Some of these numbers I'm about to give you real quickly are astounding to me when I was doing the research on this. The US military numbers that served in World War II were 16 million, excuse me, 16,100,000. 16 million. The population of the United States in 1941 was only 133 million people. So you can just see how big that was. 405,399 Americans were killed in World War II. The number of people worldwide that served in World War II, now this is worldwide, 690 million served in one of their militaries, whether it was Italy, Germany, Russia, Japan, China, Australia, Britain, France, 690 million people. So it truly was a world war. The number of deaths worldwide in World War II were 72 million. According to the Veterans Administration, World War II vets are dying at the rate of 492 a day. Only 855,000 approximately remain alive today. Now, I've got these figures as of yesterday, so as of today, we've had 492 more die on the average. So it truly was a day that will forever stay in our minds as we are commemorating that day today. So I'm going to say the pledge of allegiance. If you will face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate your service, and I appreciate what you do for our country and what you continue to do in this community to serve the veterans that are here at this time. Thank you very much.
If I may say one more thing.
Yes, sir.
There is a book that's in the Alexandria County Library, it's called The Red Book, but it was published by the VFW right after World War II. And it supposedly has pictures in a bio of all the people from Alexandria County that served in World War II. So you may see a relative, so if you're not aware of the book, go to the library. It really has a red cover on it. As you can see, mine's been handled a lot, so it doesn't have a red cover on it anymore. But it's really interesting to go through this book and see people that I knew growing up that had no idea that served in World War II. So I'd encourage all of you to go to the library and look at that book.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, does any commissioner have a report tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I have a short.
Very good, sir.
Earlier today, one of the committees that I'm assigned to is the CBCC Advisory Board for Alexandria County. And I do my best to get to the meetings, don't always get there. But today, we had Cherie Berry, who is the Commissioner of Labor for State North Carolina. And didn't know this, but she actually resides in Newton, so she's not that far away when she's home. But she gave us some real brief information about her job and what she does and all this. It was really interesting, because I hadn't, I mean, like she said, most of us know her pictures in every elevator that you go in in State North Carolina. And actually, the Department of Labor and the Commissioner of Labor do a lot more than that. But one thing that I found very interesting, as she was talking about employment and labor and safety, you know, and they do a lot concerning safety, you know, they're over OSHA for North Carolina and other things like that. But she also kept talking about the importance of not necessarily four-year college degrees in psychology, or, you know, four-year college degrees in social science, or theater, or something like that, which so many of us thought was what we needed to do to make it in this world. But the importance of trades, and how important it is, how important it is that we have plumbers and electricians and carpenters and HVAC contractors and welders. And where I'm kind of going with this is, you know, we're just starting the construction renovations on the CBCC Applied Technology Center. And it's designed to teach our people, be, you know, whether they're adults, whether they're students, a trade. And, you know, it kind of struck a chord with me, how, you know, I mean, I've thought about it before, but how important it is that we have these people. And these people weren't making minimum wage. Another thing she mentioned that struck me was construction produces more millionaires than any other segment of business. And when you say construction, that's plumbing, electrical, HVAC, carpenters, you know, concrete finishers, whatever. But I thought that was interesting, that, you know, there are more guys that start out working in heat and air that become millionaires than start working at this bank as a branch manager, you know, as a branch manager trainee, or working at, you know, this company as a marketing specialist after they... So I just want to say, I think our kids and our, as well as adult population, are going to have a great opportunity with the CBCC Applied Technology Center. Hopefully, we can make sure, you know, we can ensure that there are qualified people in our community to keep this stuff up. But I hope that wasn't too long, but I just thought that was pretty interesting.
It is. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make mention of some numbers that was given to me. I'm on the Senior Senator Board, and Jill Wood is here with us tonight. Here in Alexandria County, I'm all for if we can save money and help people, that's, you know, what we should be doing. And she handed me some notes that had some figures on it. And these are the ones that's been helped, I guess, in this sign-up for Medicare. 489 people were helped, and this kind of amazed me. $505,088 were saved for those people by the senior center being there and helping the people. So I just thought I'd make mention of that. That's some pretty good numbers, and a dollar saved is a dollar that's kept. So thank you for what y'all do.
My math's not really good, but that's over $1,000 per person.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make note of one thing. A lot of people don't know the extent of the duties of the county commissioners. And, you know, a lot of times, we don't talk about the details of different things at these meetings. But I'm going to read a letter. Our chairman Larry Yoder had written a letter to our representative, Virginia Fox, and he received a reply from her. And I'm not going to read the entire thing, it's just too long, but I'll read portions of it. And then I'm going to read portions of another letter later. But it says, "Dear Larry, thank you for contacting me to express concerns of yours and the entire board of the Alexandria County Commissioners about the Department of Labor's proposed rule on overtime pay." Now, that is the United States Department of Labor, not North Carolina. Skipping down. "Due to our shared concerns, I joined several of my colleagues on the House Committee on Education and the Workforce in sending a letter to United States Department of Labor Secretary Thomas Perez requesting a 60-day extension of the comment period for the rule change to allow adequate time for the public to review, evaluate, and comment on the proposed changes." What this concerns is overtime pay for white-collar workers. A lot of county employees are on salary. And this is going to affect our budget if this passes, and I have no doubt that it's going to. So it will be a detriment to the budget. There's another letter included here to Thomas Perez, Secretary of the United States Department of Labor, from John Klein, who's the chairman of the Committee on Education and the Workforce. He received a reply from Mr. Perez that says, "Dear Chairman Klein, thank you for your letter, August 21st, 2015, regarding the Department of Labor's notice of proposed rulemaking to update the overtime regulations for white-collar workers under the Fair Labor Standards Act. In your letter, you requested that the department extend the comment period for an additional 60 days. Your letter was forwarded to my office for a response. On March 13th, 2014, President Obama signed a presidential memorandum directing the department to update the regulations defining which white-collar workers are protected by the FLSA's minimum wage and overtime standards. Jumped down, based on past experience and extensive work with the regulated community on these matters, we believe a 60-day comment period provides sufficient time. And for these reasons, we will not be extending the comment period." The reason I'm even mentioning that is because it's going to be a negative impact to our budget when this passes. It will be to all small rural counties in North Carolina and throughout the nation, and towns and cities. But what you get is, they've already made their mind up. All they were asking for was an extra 60 days of comments so that we could get the information together, get it to our representatives, so that they could get it to the people in administration in Washington. But that's just some of the things that we deal with in this position. And I just thought it was interesting, and wanted to let the public know. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ryan, I think also that's going to affect government, but it affects business, too. We've already seen it affect our company. We had to reclassify some workers that basically are income generators, that don't supervise people, and that are also paid a commission upon their sales. So now, our company is paying overtime as they invest more time in to get the deals done, as well as a commission. And, you know, at the end of the day, the consumer's going to pay.
Right.
I mean, we can all sit around and say, this person's going to, or this person, but ultimately, the consumer's going to have the negative impact with price increases on whatever item or good is being cost increased on.
And the taxpayer.
And taxpayer. So one more thing, we did our SWAT meeting about three months ago, kind of looking towards the January for an update on that, because we came out of there with some interesting potential action items. So, you know, maybe as we look at our calendars, you know, December, that's a dead month for trying to get people to come at various times. But maybe that's something later that we can look at as a group and see what options we have.
Why don't we do that now? I mean, even though, why don't we ask our clerk if she would go ahead and be looking at some dates, and run them by you and Commissioner Reese, and see if we can get that set up? Because that was a good program, a lot of valuable information came out that night. And I think it's worthwhile to continue that on and make sure that we do those things to get public input.
I think it's pretty easy for us to reach back out, because we acquired the email addresses and contact information. So the neat thing is, we can do it electronically, and thus at no cost.
Absolutely.
Or minimal cost.
Yeah. And that's a very good thing. Anything else? Okay, gentlemen, you have your agendas before you tonight. There's a couple things I'd like to change, and I want to make one comment. We're going to move out of number five and six up to two and three, up to two and three. Everything else will fall down one in its place. I'm going to make that in the form of a motion. And I move that with the agenda adjustment, that we approve this agenda.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those approve. Now, one other item on the, that I'd like to bring up quickly is the fact that Commissioner Lael is going to have to leave at approximately 6:45, 6:50. He has a prior commitment. And I'd like for this board to give him approval to leave. Therefore, if we give him the approval to leave at this time, then anything that would come up in that action, his vote would be considered a yes vote. And that his vote would be abstained from any voting after he leaves. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Motion's made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those approve likewise. Commissioner Lael, you are approved to leave without...
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. The item number one, Madam Clerk, have we had anyone sign up to for public comment? Thank you very much. No public comment. We'll move to the item number two at this time, will be the election of board chairman. And before we elect the chairman and elect the vice chairman, I want to remind all of you that once we do elect the vice chairman and the chairman, that that office will take effect January the 1st, 2016. So therefore, at this time, I entertain a motion for board chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that Ryan Mayberry be considered for chairman.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made in second. Is there any other nominations? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number three on the agenda is the election of board chairman. I entertain a motion for, excuse me, vice chairman. Motion for vice chairman at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Milton Campbell for the position of vice chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion's made in second by Commissioner Lael. At this time, is there any further discussion or any other nominations? If not, the motion's made in second. All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item number four will be the Alexandria County 2015 Audit Presentation. At this time, I'd like to call on Erica Brown with Martin Star and Associates.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here to present to you tonight the summary financial statements, audited financial statements for fiscal year 2015. Go to the next slide, please. We did issue an unmodified audit opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion. This is the best opinion that you can get. I'd like to thank Jennifer and all the finance staff for being cooperative and being so prepared as they always are. That makes our job a lot easier, and we truly do appreciate that. Another thing I'd like to note is there was a new government accounting standard, number 68, that was implemented this year. And I bring this to your attention because the financial statements look a little bit different. This standard, just briefly, is related to the state retirement plan, and this was implemented for anybody that was involved in that state plan. So we can answer some, any detailed questions you have about that later. I just wanted to mention that. So this slide shows us the revenues for the general fund. The top three revenues in the general fund are property taxes at 51%, local option sales tax at 19%, and restricted intergovernmental revenues, which are your federal and state grants, at 15%. So those three revenues make up 85% of the general fund's revenues. The remaining 15% revenues come from sales and services, permits and fees, and miscellaneous and other revenues. Avalarm sales taxes, if you compare 2014 to 2015, there was a $1.1 million increase, or 6.8%, and this was due to an increase in the tax rate of 6 cents. Sales tax increased from 2014 to 2015 by $272,000, or 4.4%, and this was just mainly due to an improving local economy.
What was that percentage increase? I'm sorry.
4.4% or $272,000. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, which are your federal and state grants, these increased $338,000, or 7.2%, and this was mainly due to the Department of Social Services revenues and the state aid increases. Next, we have the expenditures for the general fund. The top three expenditures were human services at 29%, public safety at 26%, and education at 17%. Those top three make up 72% of the expenditures of the general fund. And the remaining 28% of expenditures come from general government, culture and recreation, debt service, environmental protection, and economic and physical development. Human services, this includes the Health Department, DSS, and the Senior Center. And these expenditures increased $119,000, or 1.2%, and this was a relative increase with the revenue increases.
So that's a, that equals out to the extra money that came in from state and federal grants, correct?
Correct, yes. Public safety, which made up 26% of the expenditures, and this includes the sheriff's office, detention center, fire protection, emergency communications, inspections, and emergency medical. And this increased about $526,000, or 6.7%. Most of this was attributable to the cost center increases at the detention center, and there was more inmates, which caused more cost. And there was also an increase in EMS salary and benefits, and this was due to a change in shifts and scheduling. Education, this includes current expenses for the board education, auditorium reimbursement, and the community college. There was a slight decrease of $35,000, or less than 1%. The local schools portion was the same as the prior year, but the community college was slightly lower. Here we'll move to looking at the general fund debt. This slide shows us that principal payments in the current year were $2.2 million on your debt, and approximately $400,000 in interest was paid. So this gives us $2.6 million that was paid toward debt, principal, and interest. Of this, 4% was for general government debt, and, let me back up a minute. The next, below there, you can see what the total debt balance is, and that's what our payments are going towards. So the payments are going towards $11.7 million in debt, which was the balance at June 30, 2015. And 4% of that's for general government, and that debt is expected to be paid off in 2019. 33% or $3.8 million is going towards education or school debt, and that's expected to be paid off in 2021. And then 63% or $7.3 million is for the jail, which is expected to be paid off in 2026. The next few slides will talk about fund balance, and I want to start off by defining fund balance. Fund balance serves as a measure of the county's financial resources. So if you take your assets and deferred outflows, less your liabilities and deferred inflows, you get your fund balance. That's then broken out into five classifications. Non-spendable, which are items not in cash form, such as prepaid and inventory. Restricted, which are external restrictions from laws or grantors. Committed, which is internal constraints at the highest level, which is the board level in your case. They do not expire, and they require board action to undo. Then there's assigned, which is also an internal constraint, but that is a lower level than committed. And then what is left over is your unassigned, which has no external or internal constraints. Another fund balance definition that you'll hear this term a lot is available fund balance. An available fund balance is defined by the local government commission, and is calculated by taking your total fund balance, less non-spendable, which would be items such as inventory and prepaids, less stabilization by state statute, which is state law basically is your receivables, and these are not available. And that gives your available fund balance. This calculation is used by the local government commission to compare you to other units in calculating your fund balance percentage. So the audit results for the general fund fund balance, there was an increase of $154,000 over prior year. The fund balance percentage as a percentage of general fund expenditures is 17.6%. And this is approximately 2.2 months' worth of expenditures. Now, if we compare this to the prior year, the prior year's percent was 19.24%, or 2.5 months of expenses. And so there was a decrease of 1.6% over the prior year in that fund balance percent.
Would this be a proper time to ask a question? How does that compare to other counties our size? If you don't mind, I'd like the people sort of know, because...
I don't have the information for 2015, it's not available yet. But the information from fiscal year 2014, our population group of counties, 25,000 to 50,000, the average fund balance available at that time was a little over 30%. So we are below that number, and over the past few years, we have actually, our fund balance percentage has been decreasing as our population group average has been increasing. So we are not seeming to follow the trend of our population group. That's something the LGC monitors, so we do need to be mindful of that.
We do. And if you don't mind, Jennifer, while you're there, go back to the thing about the LGC and how they look at the fund balance and the importance they put on that for projects, that the county may be trying to do or look to do in the future, including grants.
Right. If we have any opportunities for grants that require local matching funds, and we don't have this available fund balance, we wouldn't be able to take advantage of those opportunities. We might be overlooked in the future for those if we're deemed to be not ready. But maybe even more important than that, depending on your perspective, is the LGC, Local Government Commission, they approve debt. And part of the application, you have to show that you are able to manage your money, that you can set money aside to make those debt service payments. And if they feel that you are not keeping up with your population group average, that you're falling behind, or you're seeing significant decreases every time, they are unlikely to approve those debt issues, which that could be for, like I said, detention center, it could be for a school, it could be for a courthouse. So those are the kind of things that... So those are the kind of things that we want to keep in mind, in addition to having money available when you have something come up, a natural disaster or something of that nature. So this is a really important topic, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
One question, our population group, do you have the data there of how much debt they have? Because, you know, that is one thing, you know, 11 million to some seems like a big number.
Right.
And it's big enough.
Oh, it's big enough, yeah.
Don't get me wrong. I wish it were five.
I don't have it with me, but I can find out.
I think that's another thing, because, I mean, you know, although, yeah, 17% fund balance, you'd like that to be more, but if your debt, your debt, well, we use debt to worth is low, then a little less stress on you than if you have a, you're more leveraged with debt.
Well, and one thing you've got to take into consideration is the detention center. So that's a, that's the biggest project this county has ever done, and that's a lot of debt.
That's correct. Before we had that, our debt was, you know, very low compared to others in our population group, but I will check that and see what it is. Is there anything else about fund balance at this time?
Not at this time. Something pops, I'll ask. Thank you.
Okay, go to the next slide. So just a little bit more about fund balance. So the total fund balance in the general fund was $9.7 million. If you back out your non-spendable amounts, which are your prepaid's, back out the stabilization by state statute of 3.2 million, that gives us available fund balance of a little over $6 million. The available fund balance in 2014 was $6.5 million, so that's a decrease in available fund balance of 500, a little over $500,000. A lot of this decrease is due to the overall fund balance decrease, as well as an increase in non-spendables, which is a timing issue with prepaid's, and also an increase in the stabilization by state statute, which again is basically receivables, and that's also a timing issue.
So it could have gone up 500,000 instead of going, well, you know...
There's a lot of factors that play in there, yes. So everything we've talked about up to this point was related to your general fund. The next slides that I have relate to your enterprise funds. The first one that I have is the solid waste fund overview. Cash flow from operations are negative $220,000, and budgetary net loss was $33,000, and this fund does not have any long-term debt. I'd like to mention that the budgetary income or loss does not include depreciation expense, so this is only cash items, revenues, and expenditures. The total net position for the solid waste fund was $162,000, and then if you back out your net investment in capital assets, which is your capital assets less the debt that you have on that, there's an unrestricted net position of negative $643,000. And I would like to explain what net position is. That is, again, very similar to fund balance, just different terminology because of the fund type. So if you take your assets and deferred outflows, minus your liabilities and deferred inflows, this gives you that net position number.
Is that based on most likely debt on equipment or...
Do, there's no, I'll let you speak to that.
We don't have any debt. There's no debt in the solid waste fund, but just some notes I had made to try to explain it a little bit easier. The solid waste fund's assets exceed its liabilities by $162,000, but that excess, which is called net position, it can't be spent because it's tied up in land and buildings and vehicles and equipment, so it's not really related to the debt, but it's because they're in items that can't be spent, it's not cash.
So that's where the $805,000 comes into...
The next slide shows us your water funds. There's two water funds, Bethlehem Water and the County Water and Sewer. Cash flow from operations for Bethlehem Water was $337,000, and the net income was a little over $73,000. The County Water and Sewer Fund had cash flow from operations of $294,000 and a budgetary net income of $65,000. If we look at the net position, Bethlehem Water had a total net position of $2.2 million, less those capital assets of a little over $1 million gives you a positive unrestricted net position of $1.1 million. And then the County Water and Sewer Fund, net, total net position of $9.2 million, less your net investment in capital assets of 8.3, gives us an unrestricted net position positive of $878,000. Now, these two enterprise funds, the water funds, do both have debt. Bethlehem Water has outstanding debt of close to $506,000 at June 30, 2015. During the fiscal year, principal was paid of $179,000 and interest of a little over $12,000, and this debt is expected to be paid off in 2018. The County Water and Sewer has outstanding debt of a little over $5 million, with principal being paid of $200,000 and interest being paid of close to $59,000, and this debt is expected to be paid off in 2035. Now, with all that being said, I presented to you a lot of numbers. I know you have just received the audited financial statements, which they were approved, accepted by the local government commission. I'd like to guide you for a summary. On page four is the management discussion and analysis, and this is a great spot to look. You don't want to read this book from cover to cover. That just gives you a summary of what happened in the current year, reasons for increases and decreases, and towards the end of that also talks about the fiscal year 2016 budget. So I think this is a great resource for summary information. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I got a couple.
Go ahead.
And Jennifer, you may have to answer this. I'm not sure. On the third slide, it shows restricted intergovernmental, that's federal and state grants. Which departments see the most of that revenue coming into?
Social Services and Health.
Okay. So, so the money comes from the state or federal government, and it goes into our general fund, and then we spend that out according to the mandates by the state or the federal government, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, let me find the other slide I was looking for. Okay, so the other slide that shows restricted intergovernmental from 2014 to 2015 is up 7.2%. So the budget may be up 72, 7.2%, but the majority of that is coming from state or federal funds that are outflowing...
Yes, yes.
It's not like the taxpayers have increased the budget.
Right. The Social Services and Health, it's mainly grant money, so when the revenue side goes up, the expenditure side will go up as well.
Anyone else?
In regard to the results, I know there was, this goes back to budget year, a little preceding some of us, but how does, how did the actual performance of budget, because it appears to me, I think we were looking at a potentially bigger dip into the fund balance than what we actually saw. Is that a fair statement, or is that unfair?
We didn't spend, the fund balance we budgeted, we actually didn't spend any of that fund balance.
Right, what I'm saying is, okay, but from an expense standpoint, do you feel like we outperformed the budget? Because our revenue was up on sales tax, which had been trending very well.
Yes. I mean, we basically just did a little bit better than break even. We had an increase in our fund balance of $154,000, yeah.
Right, right, so that's our net position is, we did $154,000 better than we anticipated. That's correct.
And there is a schedule in the report that, that will tell you budget to actual for your revenues and expenditures. That might, that might help you to look at that if you want more details.
Yeah, I think it's Schedule 7. I'll tell you what page, it begins on page 78, if you want to look by revenue source and also by function and broken down by department. So you can see the budget versus the actual, and then it also compares that to the fiscal If you have any other questions, you can contact me, you can contact the county manager. We'll be glad to, once you've had a chance to, to look through the slides again or the financial statements.
Well, we've just got these today, and there's 115, 16 pages to go through of speed charts and diagrams and numbers, so...
I think it is encouraging that the sales tax revenue, but, you know, I've said more than once, I think it's a byproduct of fuel prices being down and discretionary income, or discretionary income available, and overall general more positive feeling about the economy, too. I think that's, that's your lift there.
And then you look at unemployment rate in our county. Right, I mean, you know, it's 4.9%, so, you know, the people are working and they're contributing, and maybe with all that, you know, our sales tax is continuing to go up.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. What, what was our unemployment rate?
4.9%. So, you know, but ladies, I also want to tell you thank you for what you've done in getting that audit in here. I feel really good about it. I'm like Commissioner Campbell, the fact that our sales tax are up and the fact that we didn't have to dip into the fund balance as far as, I was very nervous about it. I think we've done very, very well. And Jennifer, I know you were nervous about it because I've, I've heard you, talked to you about it, and I know that our county manager was, too, and I think that throughout the years, even though we've had to do some things that we don't necessarily like and don't enjoy doing, that the things that we did has just contributed to making this thing come out a little, and with the work of you all and with our county employees and the staff and everyone trying to do the best they could to make sure that we stayed, kept things down, I think it's very good. So we need to continue this upward process of making sure, progress, of making sure our fund balance continues to climb, which is one of the important things. When I first came on this board, our fund balance was 3%, Jennifer?
2%.
2%. And I remember the first year I was chair, but I got a nice little letter from the LGC, and it was, I served on this board for four years, or maybe five years, before we could even do anything. We were not allowed to borrow money to get water, to put water lines in. We weren't, when we were trying to talk, we talked about the jail even then, and we couldn't borrow the money to be able to do the jail at that time. So even though folks may feel like that this has been a terrible time for this county in the last year, two or three, I can honestly say that we've been in a lot worse shape, and this is outstanding compared to where we were when I first came on this board 10 years, I mean, 12 years ago. So thank you very much for the job, and to all the employees, and to Mr. French for the outstanding work that everybody's done to make this better than it's been in a long time.
I have one last thing.
Yes, sir.
I think your department, a clean audit is not an easy task, and so I think we definitely need to recognize the finance department because...
Absolutely.
The requirements now be more burdensome than ever to get that is a very significant step, and says something about the quality of the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. We have to make a motion to approve the audit. Gentlemen, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the audit.
I make a motion to approve the audit, as presented.
Second?
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor in the capera's in your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Good job, good job. Item number five, the approval of sales order agreement for Board of Elections equipment. And at this time, I'd call on our Alexander County Board of Elections Director, Mrs. Judy Lael.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. With me tonight are Nancy Sharp, Board Chair, and Patrick White, Deputy Director from the Alexander County Board of Elections. In 2002, a United States federal law was passed, the Help America Vote Act, or HAVA. Congress appropriated $3 billion to the Elections Assistance Commission to improve, acquire, lease, modify, or replace voting systems and technology. Beginning in 2006, Alexander County was a recipient of some of those funds to purchase ballot tabulating equipment, called the M-100 scanner and tabulator, and ADA compliant ballot marking devices, called AutoMark. Most of those funds allocated for North Carolina have been used. The voting equipment is now 10 years old, and the memory cards used for the equipment are obsolete. Election Systems and Software, the company that sold the M-100 scanner and tabulator, has a new version of this same type of voting equipment, the DS-200 digital image scanner. The DS-200 is the only new voting equipment that has been certified by the North Carolina State Board of Elections at this time. Pardon me. In February of this year, Print-elect provided a demonstration of the DS-200 in our office to the board and staff. During the demo, the, an M-100 was placed beside the DS-200 tabulator. Test ballots were run numerous times for comparison. We concluded that the DS-200 accepted paper ballots quicker and more efficiently than our M-100. For the town of Taylorsville municipal election, we tested a DS-200 on loan from Print-elect during one-stop early voting. The voters saw very little difference in their voting experience, except that the DS-200 accepted their paper ballots quieter and faster. We are pleased with our overall testing experience with the DS-200 digital image scanner. We are awaiting the State Board of Elections approval to replace Alexander County voting system. Session Law 2015-103 changed the requirements from a vendor who must now post a bond or a letter of credit. The State Board of Elections must now also review the mandatory terms of the contract for the purchase of equipment to assure that there is a uniform pricing structure across the state. In your possession are three documents. One is the resolution from the Alexander County Board of Elections recommending to the Alexander County Commissioners the purchase of new voting equipment from Election Systems and Software. The second document is the North Carolina State Board of Elections, a document entitled "Procedures for Recommendation of Purchase of Certified Voting Systems." Step five of these procedures is to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for their approval and funding to acquire the new voting system. The third document is the sales order agreement for the purchase of 15 DS-200 digital image scanners and ballot boxes, DS-200 tote bins, 10 extra encrypted jump drives, training, and shipping. We would like to trade in 25 M-100 tabulators, 25 ballot boxes, and seven AutoMarks will no longer be needed. The quoted purchase price is $82,255.44. We are asking for your conditional approval to purchase this new equipment, barring any unforcing change in the pricing structure that would decrease the purchase price as quoted. If you choose to approve the purchase of this new voting equipment, then when we are able to acquire the final approval from the State Board of Elections, we will be able to ask for this document to be signed and move forward with the acquisition of this new equipment.
Very good. Thank you. Gentlemen, I think this is the time that she's wanting us to approve the sales order agreement for the Board of Elections equipment. As my understanding, it saves us some money, then also the fact that even if we approve this tonight with this sales agreement, there's a possibility that it will come in lower than what we're looking at here tonight, but at the same time, it will not go any higher than what's already been presented.
That's my understanding of their explanation.
Right, and she has a, you know, in your pocket that she gave you, on the backside there, there's an email that she sent this morning where she had spoken to everybody and certified and verified and, and taken care of all that to make sure that this was the way it was going to be. So she has that documentation. So at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, well, you, yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to ask, does this equipment have to be purchased this year? Or when's this equipment...
Our next election is March 15th.
Yeah.
And we have to have, we will be ordering ballots. Right now, we're filing, and we have to order ballots immediately after Christmas, which means that we'll need to start doing our, you know, we need to order the equipment, get it in here so that we have time to do our, all the testing that we have to do with all the equipment. It's called logic and accuracy testing, and we have to do extensive testing with every machine, and then we have to run a mock election with the state, and that's scheduled for February 18th. So time is beginning to be short.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, why does the equipment need to be replaced now?
It's 10 years old.
Okay.
And the lifespan on that equipment was scheduled for about eight to 10 years, so we're really at the end of it.
Okay.
And I understand the board had set aside money for several years.
That's correct. That's correct.
A quick question. I see that it was tested at the town one-stop absentee, because I know that was a very low turnout, what, sub-300? So actually, how many went through the process? went through the process?
We had a hundred and sixty-two, I think, that went through that tabulator.
Okay.
Two hundred and forty-seven voted in the town election.
Okay.
That's not a lot of people.
Not a lot of people.
Well, the town of Taylorsville has a little less than thirteen hundred registered voters.
Um, I think we had estimated a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Initially.
Initially. So, is the savings coming in from the, uh, decrease in the state contract or, or whatever it is?
The, several things.
Burging.
This, the savings from the precinct merges was the initial. And then, uh, with the equipment, as you can see, there's several credits on that sales order agreement, and we realized we, that we wouldn't need some of the AutoMarks. Uh, the AutoMarks are a handicap, an ADA accessible machine to mark a ballot, and because we've decreased the number of voting precincts, we don't need quite as many of those. So, when we, uh, actually, Patrick mentioned that first, and so we traded those, asked them if they could trade those in and get some credit, additional credit on that. So, that's why it brought it down to that amount.
You've done a good job negotiating this, I think.
Thanks.
I think it's a very good job, you know, I mean, I, I commented a little while ago, too. I, I stood back there, talked to her for a few minutes, and, uh, I commented to them, what an outstanding job that I thought that, uh, our, our Board of Elections and the personnel at the Board of Elections Office is doing, and, uh, I've been fairly impressed, uh, through the process.
Thank you.
So, I, I want to commend you because you've got good people working there, and, and, uh, I'm, I've been impressed. Thank you very much for the job you do. Uh, at this time, gentlemen, is anybody else have any questions? At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, I guess, accept the sales order agreement and the information as presented by the Board of Elections to purchase the equipment.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion is made in second. Now, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number, uh, six is the recognition of Santa Cops. I'll call on Captain Mike, Captain Michael Harrison of the Alexander County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In two thousand and nine, after recognizing a disturbing need in our county, the Sheriff's Office began soliciting donations of toys to be distributed to children of our county's detention inmates. What we learned is that many of the children, in addition to not being with their parent at Christmas time, also don't get a visit from Santa Claus. What we saw was an opportunity to interact in a positive way with young people who are likely being reared in an environment where law enforcement is stigmatized. What we planned was a few minutes with each child to tell them that we are on their side. Our thought was that if the only gift that a child receives for Christmas is delivered to their home by a uniformed law enforcement officer, they will almost certainly remember that forever. What we hoped for was a chance to perhaps modify some lifetime attitudes for some young people in a, in a very positive way. What we felt since has been a palpable change in the way that we in law enforcement are received in some segments of the county, where previously we've experienced few or no positive interactions. Uh, the nuts and bolts of the program is that each year, we ask the community for contributions of new unwrapped toys, and the response has just, has been no less than tremendous, really. The toys, uh, are wrapped by volunteers who come to the Sheriff's Office, and then, uh, they're delivered on Christmas Eve and on Christmas Day by officers of the, of our Sheriff's Office, and also, uh, along with the Taylorsville Police Department, state highway patrol troopers, and the adult probation and parole officers here in the county. What we want children to recognize is that we're, we're approachable, and that they can come to us if they need help. We don't want them to be, to have fear and be afraid to let us know. And so far, we've been able to serve the families of, of about one hundred kids who we consider, uh, victims, forgotten victims of crime, really. This year, we're accepting donations through December the seventeenth. Uh, we have collection boxes that are located in the lower lobby of the county courthouse, the lobby of the county law enforcement center, the Taylorsville Police Department, Stony Point Fire Department, the Bethlehem Branch Library, and the Old Steel Golf Clubhouse at Oliver's Landing. I'd like to take this opportunity just to thank you, the board, and others who have supported us and enabled us to help make Christmas a little brighter for these young folks who, through no, no fault of their own have, uh, are in a really difficult position in the holidays.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight, and I think that Vice Chairman Mayberry may have something he'd like to say about this.
Well, I know, uh, Captain Harrison has been doing this, uh, he's, he's been running this program for, I guess, since it started, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Two thousand and nine. Um, and we appreciate what you do. These kids, you know, we can only imagine what some children have to go through, and, uh, you know, it's sad. It really is. Um, and, and these kids, a lot of them come from, um, you know, really, really poor circumstances, and they may be lucky to get any kind of Christmas, even if the parents weren't in the detention center. So, how many people do you have in the detention center right now? A hundred and, just a-
I thought you might ask, so I pulled that up. We have eighty-two males and fifteen female inmates at this minute.
Okay. So, that's potentially, you know, all of them could have children, or two or three children, and, uh, you know, that's, that's a lot of kids that, that may not have a Christmas. And I know the people of Alexander County are, you know, they're some of the most giving people in the world, and, uh, if, if you can just, you know, go buy a toy, or two toys, or three toys, and take them and drop them off, um, you get to December seventeenth, and I'm going to say, uh, you can take it to the county courthouse, the lobby of the county law enforcement center, Taylorsville Police Department, Stony Point Fire Department, Bethlehem Branch Library, and the Old Steel Golf Course, uh, at Oliver's Landing. So, you can make a child's, uh, Christmas a little bit better.
Absolutely. At this time, uh, Captain Harrison, if you'll come up here in front of me, I'll, I'll give you something that you weren't expecting.
Oh.
Each one of us have taken the initiative tonight to bring, give you some gifts to take with you for the COPS program, and I appreciate the job you've done, the job you are doing, and the job that you will do in the future. And that goes out to all of you, to Sheriff's Department, and Sheriff Bowman, and all of you. I appreciate the job you do.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Michael, we got some more.
We got.
Yeah.
And I took, I took my daughter, and she actually picked that out.
I just want to say, thank y'all for, uh, you know, helping us out on this.
I'll help.
If, if, if y'all could have been with us over the past year since two thousand and nine, going on Christmas Eve and Christmas morning, and seeing these young, uh, children's faces whenever the officers walk in, it's unreal. And, and believe it or not, to this day, since two thousand and nine, the kids remember the officers coming, and that's what it's all about, too, making sure they got a Christmas. So, again, appreciate y'all taking time to, um, do what you did tonight.
Absolutely, because I agree with you. I think it's great that you're able to do that for those kids, but it also develops a better worker relationship between those children and law enforcement, which they need at this time in their lives.
That, that is correct, and believe it or not, it's been situations that the parents have been incarcerated, looks back on that, and has made changes in some of their lives, too. So, it's, it's worth, worthwhile cause. So, thank you again.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, I, I want you to tell the public what, uh, Mr. Harrison does every Christmas Eve.
Okay, about-
Don't, don't you patrol every Christmas Eve? Am I mistaken?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So that the, so that the other officers can spend time with their family.
Yes, yes. And, uh, we, we, we try to get them on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day to be able to spend as much time as they, they can. Of course, y'all know as well as everybody else, this dead time, it stays real busy. But, um, uh, we try to work at where each officer can spend a little bit of time, uh, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, to spend some time with their, their family and children. We have so many officers now, it's got the small kids. Uh, the old men like me, you know, it don't matter, so. But again, uh, I've took up enough time and, and thank, uh, Rick French, County Manager, Commissioners, Clerk, everything that you've done all year. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the agenda is the Mitchell Gold, Bob Williams Natural Gas Project Resolution. I'd call on, uh, the David Eisenhower, Alexander County EDC Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In your packet, you have a resolution that is related to the application with North Carolina Department of Commerce for the natural gas project for Mitchell Gold. And as you may remember, we've been working on this project for quite an extended period of time now. And with the assistance of County Engineer Daryl Robertson, and with the project engineer Scott Heath of Heath and Associates, we opened bids for this project on November tenth. Unfortunately, the bids were significantly higher than what we had anticipated, and we are attributing that to an increase in the economic activity for the companies that do this kind of work, and it's, it's a smaller project, so for that reason, and possibly others, the bids came in higher. So, at this point, the construction bid for this project was approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Now, you have to add to that engineering costs, right-of-way acquisition, and some other costs. So, our total project at this point is approximately four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, to fund that, we've went back once again to the North Carolina Department of Commerce and requested additional funds, which I have been, uh, the indication is that they will approve on December seventeenth, a total of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for this project, which requires a twenty-five percent match from county government, which would be eighty-eight thousand dollars for this project. Uh, Mitchell Gold has pledged, uh, up to ten thousand for this project, and plus, they're also creating twenty-two, uh, twenty new jobs at their facility. PSNC is also participating in the project through actually building some of it. So, in addition to what we bid, PSNC, which is the natural gas company serving Mitchell Gold, is putting in an in excess of fifty thousand dollars in construction cost. Uh, I'd also like to point out that this, the matching is a percentage. So, hopefully, even though we have a bid that is higher, we have some ideas that may result in some savings in the end. So, if we save money on the total project, the match will go down. So, what you're looking at in this resolution is, is a worst-case scenario. Uh, at this point, I don't, I don't anticipate it could get any worse than what these bids are tonight. Um, the good part of this is it's still a worthy economic development project. It, it provides support for an industry that will, once they meet their job goal for this project, will be employing, you know, over five hundred people. They've been here a long time. And again, as I said before, this project extends natural gas service across US sixty-four, opens up new territory for, uh, others who may be able to, you know, connect to the natural gas line in the future. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, stop and try to answer any questions you may have, but it, it would be my recommendation that the board consider adopting this resolution so that we can move forward with this project.
Absolutely. And the thing that I would say about this resolution and what we're doing, this is another way of Alexander County government and economic development working with a, an existing industry in order to improve the quality and their operational cost at their facility. And, uh, I think this will really help Mitchell Gold, uh, especially with its, uh, heating and cost there at that facility. So, this will be really good. Uh, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Uh, make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment. Uh, this is a, this is going to be a good project. Uh, Mitchell Gold, Bob Williams, has been here a long time. They've employed a lot of people in this county. Um, we want, you know, Alexander County Government doesn't create private sector jobs, but we can put in the infrastructure that allows our manufacturers in this county to grow and to stay here, and, um, keep, keep creating new jobs. Uh, they're going to create twenty new jobs out of this, but how many, how many more may come down the line? Um, and I appreciate Mitchell Gold for sticking to Alexander County and staying here, because I will promise you, there's other states and other counties, uh, out there that are constantly trying to, uh, woo manufacturing companies to their locations. So, it's, it's a competitive environment.
Okay. There's been a motion in the second. All those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eisenhower.
Thank you.
Item number, uh, eight, the Felburn Foundation Grant Award. Mr. Eisenhower?
Thank you, sir. You also have in your packets a letter from the Felburn Foundation. It's my pleasure to be able to announce that the Felburn Foundation has, uh, announced their decision to provide a grant to Alexander County in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. This money is earmarked for purchase of additional property that's adjacent to Rocky Face Park. And just as, just as a quick background, of course, Felburn Foundation is really the, uh, I guess, first link in the chain that resulted in the creation of, of Rocky Face as one of the most unique county-owned parks in this state, in my opinion. Of course, Felburn originally purchased, uh, the property, and they are a land preservation society. That is their goal in life, is to preserve property for historical purposes and to preserve the natural resources associated with properties. And in this case, this piece of property is extremely important to the, uh, next phase of Rocky Face. It is a, a piece of property that's actually crossed the road from the park, but the, uh, the important thing is this, the county ownership of this property will, number one, preserve the aesthetics of the area, and number two, it has a functioning septic system on that property, which will be of value as we expand, uh, opportunities at the park. Uh, again, this is a hundred percent grant from the Felburn Foundation, and there is no money required, uh, to match these funds from the Felburn Foundation. And, of course, I want to express my appreciation. The Felburn Foundation has been great to work with over the years. They have provided, not only did they deed the property originally to Carolina Land and Lakes, uh, Conservation District, which then in turn deeded it to county, but Felburn Foundation has also provided other matching, or other hundred percent or fifty percent grants in the past that helped Alexander County purchase other property associated with the park. So, Mr. Chairman, I will end my comments there.
Thank you very much, sir.
That's all I have.
That's nice to get that twenty thousand dollar grant, to get that extra little piece of land there. That'll be great, uh, great, uh, for the Rocky Face Park.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine, proclamation declaring December the first through December the thirty-first, December thirty-first through two thousand and fifteen as Christmas in Bethlehem. Vice Chairman Mayberry?
Yes, I wish we could remember to do this in November, but I never do, so, uh, this, uh, I'm going to read this proclamation. Uh, proclamation declaring December first through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen as Christmas in Bethlehem. Whereas the Bethlehem Community Development Association has been a longtime supporter of improvements and quality of life issues in the Bethlehem area, and whereas Alexander County Government wishes to assist the Bethlehem Community Development Association in promoting events that increase community spirit and offer opportunities for fellowship during the Christmas season. And whereas the Bethlehem Starlighting has been a fixture of the Christmas season for more than thirty years, annually drawing thousands of citizens to the Bethlehem area. And whereas the annual Bethlehem Starlighting took place on December fifth, two thousand and fifteen, and whereas a live nativity drive-through will occur December the eleventh through the thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas these Christmas events promote values and morals, which are the binding fiber of the community, and these events are strongly supported by the Bethlehem Community Development Association, area churches, businesses- Association, area churches, businesses, and citizens. Be it therefore resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners declares December first through December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen as Christmas in Bethlehem, adopted the seventh day of December, two thousand and fifteen. And I will make that, I would like to make a motion that we accept this proclamation declaring Christmas in Bethlehem.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Mayberry.
Thank you.
Item number ten, nuisance property update. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick reminder, several months ago, the Commissioners adopted changes to the solid waste ordinance and to report a nuisance property in the county. We have set up a phone number for you to call. That number is six-three-two thirteen seventy-two, six-three-two thirteen seventy-two. If you leave a detailed message, including your name, contact information, address of the property you're complaining or calling about, the nature of the complaint, and we'll follow up on that and start remediation as quickly as possible. But again, that number is six-three-two thirteen seventy-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eleven, county sales tax revenue for two thousand fifteen sixteen budget year report. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You actually have two months' reports in your packet. The first report, year-to-date sales tax received through October two thousand fifteen is seven hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Collected a little over eighteen percent of the budget, and with sixteen point six-seven percent of the budget expired, we budgeted three point eight million dollars in sales tax revenue in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Compared to last year, we're ten point two percent ahead. Next page, you have the year-to-date sales tax revenue received through November two thousand fifteen, one million, fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Twenty-seven, over twenty-seven percent of the budget number, and the budget year expired is twenty-five percent, so we're still ahead there. And we're running about nine point nine, almost ten percent still through November. So, those are encouraging numbers for our sales tax.
They're very encouraging numbers, because it looks like November, December, and we get the report in February for December, it should be probably twelve percent, I hope.
We hope.
Absolutely. Very good, Mr. French. Thank you. Item number twelve, board appointments and reappointments. Mr. French, County Manager?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Appointments for the Senior Senator Advisory Committee, appoint Douglas, is that Halls?
Halls.
Halls. Nancy Misamore and Fred Kessler, and reappoint Chris Halls for three years. All those are for three years. On the Health Board, appoint Janet Bowles, Jeff Peel, Macy Jones for three years. Reappoint Jennifer Hull for three years. The Western Pedenmark Council of Government, MPO, RPO, Transportation Advisory Committee, appoint Commissioner Larry Yoder. Region E, Adult Care and Nursing Home, reappoint Phyllis Douglas for three years. The Local Emergency Planning Committee, appoint Jeff Peel, Robert Chapman. Reappoint Steve Eisenhower, Micah Henry, John McCurdy, and Keith Herschel. Those are all for three years. I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman. We still have some vacancies, but those are the appointments that we have to make.
And we still need some folks to serve on the Region E, Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Two, on the Town Planning Board of Adjustments.
That's correct.
And you must live in the ECJ. And one, on the Health Board. So, we still have some vacancies that need to be approved. One thing right there, if y'all don't mind me throwing this in real quick, Mr. French, you can help me if I forgot the exact House Bill number, but I'm just looking at this thing on the Transportation Board, the Senate Bill fifty-seven, or House Bill fifty-seven, that they passed, that no more money can be taken out of the Highway Trust Fund, to be put in the General Fund. That has happened. It's been one of the major complaints of counties all around and people across the state, because they were taking money out of the Highway Trust Fund and putting it in the General Fund in order to balance the budget for the state of North Carolina. Well, during this last legislative session, it passed, so that they can no longer do that, which will benefit Alexander County. And the way it will is because the intersect from Highway sixteen south at the Catawba Line to Highway sixteen north at the Wills County Line, I believe it's two thousand and twenty-two, they will start expanding or widening the road and improving the NC sixteen from the Wills, from the Catawba Line to the Wills County Line. Also, on NC sixteen, I believe it's in two thousand and eighteen, we have an intersection on sixteen south at the County Home Road right there at the Rest Home. If you're familiar with that, it's a V shape. They will fix that intersection. They're gonna turn it into a squared intersection, and that's another thing that we've been working on. We've had a tremendous amount of accidents, a lot of problems right there at the rest home because of the congestion and the way the highway fits in. And we've had a lot of folks do that. We contacted the Governor, the Secretary of Transportation, the local DOTs. We've written letters for three years, Mr. French. And finally, they have moved that up for us to be able to get that intersection fixed. So, that's a real good thing that's come out of some of these meetings and some of the things that have happened. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve the county appointments.
Move to approve.
The motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number thirteen, budget ordinance amendments, number sixteen through twenty-one. Mr. French, County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several budget amendments for tonight to increase the public buildings budget for unexpected replacement of several heat pumps. We have had a number of units go out, two at the Tax Office, Health Department, DSS, and Library, Bethlehem Library, so we've had a number of those. To increase sheriff's budget for the purchased items, with federal equitable share funds received from Homeland Security in prior years, fund balance, these special units, I mean, these special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. Items to be purchased are add-on software for the records management system, computer forensic programs, and cellphone surveillance device. Also, to increase soil and water budget for state grant to purchase a handheld GPS and associated software. And also to increase the Rocky Face Park budget for a grant from the Felburn Foundation to purchase one point two-seven acres, acre tract of land, which Mr. Eisenhower reported on earlier. Land will be used for the septic system and for the new building being added at the park. That's number sixteen. Number seventeen is to increase the Health Department budget for Medicaid reimbursement funds carried forward from prior years that must be spent in fiscal year two thousand sixteen, only for the programs of care, coordination for children, and pregnancy care management. And also to increase the library budget for training, travel costs associated with the building and bench grant program. Funding provided for a federal library services and technology act grant passed through the state library. That's budget amendment number seventeen. Budget amendment number eighteen is to reimburse the emergency telephone system fund for fiscal year two thousand fifteen expenditures. That should have been paid from the General Fund, and that's, emergency telephone system fund is nine-one-one, and that's, actually, that is less than ninety bucks, but now that goes. Budget amendment number nineteen is to increase the project budget to include the ventilation system for the welding equipment based on CBCC's receipt approved from Golden Leaf to move the ventilation system for the welding equipment from welding lab equipment to building renovation. It's a designation that we had to do. Number twenty is to increase the project budget to match the approved funding from North Carolina Department of Commerce for the gas project as previously discussed. And number twenty-one is to increase the General Fund budget for the increase in Alexander County matching portion of the North Carolina Commerce Grant for the Mitchell Gold Bob Williams Natural Gas Expansion Grant Project. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Mr. French, on number nineteen, the, that is a Golden Leaf grant that's just passing through our General Fund, is it, or not a General Fund, but...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's just a pass-through?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We get the, we get the funds and then distribute the funds out?
We, I believe we have to spend the money, then we'll reimburse. I believe that's how it works.
Okay. All right.
But same difference, yes, sir.
On number sixteen, too, Mr. French, looks like most of that is grants. Is that money from the sheriff? You say that was already, has been supplied previously?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On number sixteen, number three is a cellphone surveillance device. Is that one of those stingray devices that we hear so much about in the news?
I don't know exactly, but I believe so, yes, sir.
It's, well, a lot of amendments, not a lot of, on our part, so that's good.
Yeah, it's, most of the grant, most of the grant funds are fast through funds.
Most, the majority is passed through, so it's not anything that's going to, it'll fast it for a short period of time, but till the receipts and all that stuff are turned into these different grants, and then they reimburse the county. So, it's a positive thing.
Well, and I guess remember that the Alexander Applied Technologies Project, the total budget's, you know, well over two million dollars, so those funds will go through the budget, so...
Absolutely. Any other questions? If not, gentlemen, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve budget ordinance amendments sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one as stated.
Motion's made, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
And the motion's made, and it is now second by Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number fourteen, other business, County Manager's report. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was reported earlier, the Applied Technologies Project is underway. The signs are actually up on the property. Estimated completion time for the project is about six months. And any questions about the project, County Engineer Darrell Robertson is the contact person for that. Also, in your packet there is information, Chairman Yoder mentioned it, but Anthony Starr had given us some information about new state budget projects, and the two projects in Alexander County is, Chairman Yoder reported, are listed in this report. So, with the dates and so forth. So, that's all I have. I have some items for consent.
Okay, very good, sir. Anybody have any questions? Gentlemen, there's a couple things I'd like to say right here to end on this, and I don't want to take up much time, but number one is, I want to give a shout-out to those folks that were involved in the Christmas parade this weekend, that committee, along with all the volunteers, our law enforcement, our emergency personnel that provided the safety, to block the roads off, to get our Christmas parade through town, and how much I think everyone enjoyed it. I think it was a very good parade. I've heard great comments about it. Mr. French, the guy from Channel Nine, what is his name? I can't remember. But anyway, Channel Nine was, did a thing, and they were on one of the fire trucks, Patovich, I believe is his name?
Brad.
Brad Patovich. He made some great comments about the Alexander Christmas Parade, and he said that it was one of the best Christmas parades that he had ever been to and thoroughly enjoyed it. And I think that's a great compliment to the work and to the tradition that's gone into Alexander County Christmas Parade. I'd like to give a shout-out to our mayor of Taylorsville, the Honorable George Holloman. George Holloman was elected the chairman of the Western Pedenmark Council of Governments, and he has, he will be taking over that position as of, well, it was as of December the first. So, that's a very good thing that's happened, and that's good for our county, and it's good to have representation on the Western Pedenmark Council of Government. And, Mr. French, consent items, consent agenda, I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Mr. French, you need to close session?
Yes, sir, we do. And I would mention, Mr. Chairman, that we, our attorney's not with us tonight, so we don't have the attorney-client privilege portion of that.
Right. That will not be in there. Right. Thank you, sir. Under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, dash, three eighteen, point eleven, A, to prevent disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual personnel, we will, I make that a motion to have a closed session. And we will re-adjourn for the purposes of adjournment only. No action will be taken. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion's second, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.